Good evening, everyone. We're going to get started. Welcome to the July Hoboken Board of Education meeting. I hope everyone is having a great summer so far. Ms. Good, can you please read the statement of compliance?
This meeting is being held in conformity to the Open Publics Meeting Act NJSA 10:4-6. Proper public notice of the meeting was published in the local papers on January 8, 2022. If any board member or member of the public in attendance believe that the meeting is in violation of the Open Publics Meeting Act, the Hoboken Board of Education requests that they make a statement at this time. The board wishes to make those in attendance aware that this meeting is being recorded on video and will be broadcast by the board at a later date on CATV Channel 77 and Files Channel 46. The full meeting recorder will also be made available on board docs, which can be accessed through the district homepage. The Hoboken Board of Education is committed to preserving the decorum of the public process and is mindful that we live in an electronic age of computers, cellphone, and other electronic communication devices. Nevertheless, we respectfully request that all meeting participants kindly silence their electronic devices during the course of the meeting, and if use of devices necessary, we ask that you please leave the meeting room if you need to conduct personal business.
Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Can we take the roll call, please, Ms. Good?
Ms. Katamatory.
Here.
Ms. Delira.
Here.
Mr. Delatorre. Ms. Connor.
Here.
Mr. Cluffel. Ms. McGurk. Ms. Simons. Mr. Kirian.
Here.
Ms. Angley.
Here.
You have a call.
Okay, so we don't have any recognitions tonight as our students and teachers are hopefully enjoying a few months' break, but we will resume those come fall when everyone's back in school. So next, I will turn the meeting over to Dr. Johnson for her superintendent's report.
Thank you. Good evening, everyone. Right now, as you know, we're in full swing into the summer, and I'm proud to report out that our league camps at the K through 5 and 6 through 8 levels are underway. They're filled with kids, and they're having a great time learning together and also playing together. Our all-city kickball league is also underway, so you'll see some tweets on social media or Facebook posts that show the league standings, and we have kids from all schools across the city playing in that particular kickball league. In August, after the rec department finishes with their open swim program, we will be offering Learn to Swim lessons. The demand was so high at actually all levels, it wasn't just the 5 through 7-year-old level, but it was actually all of them, that we're going to be offering additional sessions in September. We're just waiting for confirmation from swim stars to give us dates that work for them. Currently, our high school's Classroom Without Walls program is just rounding their trip out in Greece. They'll be returning tomorrow. I'm sure they had a great time, and I hope you have the opportunity to see some of their pictures on social media as well. They got to see a lot and learned a lot on the trip as well. And I think all of our kids and I think a lot of our faculty are really excited about next year's Classroom Without Walls program, which is a trip to the Galapagos Islands, and we currently have already about 30 kids that are registered for the trip, and we anticipate that there will be more. I always make sure I let people know that those trips are eligible or offered to all students, whether or not finances are a concern. We do everything we can to ensure that there are either sponsors for the trip or fundraising opportunities or use of student activities monies to ensure that no child doesn't have the chance to go on a trip like that. In addition to summer facilities projects, we're also currently preparing to open the Jubilee Center with four Hopes pre-K classrooms in September, which we needed to move four preschool classrooms out of Connor's Elementary to make room for additional sections. On the curriculum front, we're working on revising a few different documents: algebra, physical education and health, K to 8 science. We're also working on an urban farming program. In addition, we're working to design a K through 12 personal growth program that will run on all of the school district's half-days. And in addition, we're also really excited to open the Academic Support Center in September at Hoboken High School. This center is going to offer tutoring in partnership with Stevens. It will host virtual coursework. It'll provide homework assistance, college essay help, and other services for all of our high school students. I'm personally working right now to design a new family-to-the-district program that will partner up our new families with a mentor family in the district. And our hope is that this will best connect new families to our PTOs and to our school staff and also children to new classmates that they will have. So we have a barbecue planned for early September and a number of activities throughout the year. And this time is always the time when our principals are getting their schedules set for September, and they're also getting all their class lists ready. We will release those in August at the same time we always do. And lastly, there's some congratulatory remarks that I have regarding some of the administrative appointments that are on the agenda tonight. It's kind of interesting, we had a few moves and shifts just within the administrative team, and I'm really proud to say that we've also had some promotions from our educator ranks to the administrative ranks. So with that being said, I want to congratulate Kim Mara for all of her work over the last couple of years as Vice Principal of Grant Elementary School. She'll be assuming the position of Director of Early Childhood. I'd like to congratulate Mr. Christopher Williams, who is one of our high school math and engineering teachers, and he's going to be assuming the role of Vice Principal at Hoboken High School. Ms. Mara, our middle school principal, is going to be filling a combined central office position. I think it's important just to explain that we have two positions in central office. One is for grants management for both federal and state grants, as well as for non-public school oversight of things like textbooks, nursing services, technology, security, things like that. That position has been vacated as a result of a retirement. And then we also have a human resources manager position that will be open long-term as a result of a leave of absence. So Ms. Mara is going to be filling that position, or I should say, both positions in one. So we're very excited about that. She's already hard at work, as you can see. On the agenda, there's a $250,000 grant for 21st Century Learning Communities that if we receive the grant, it's a $250,000 award for five years. So we're thrilled about that. Filling the hole that Ms. Mara will leave at the middle school level will be Mr. Ryan Sorafin, who's currently the Vice Principal of Connor's Elementary School. His daughter, I think, is there cheering him on right now. Yeah, go, Mr. Sorafin. So he'll be assuming that position. And, you know, filling Mr. Sorafin's shoes at Connor's was not an easy task, but we think we found the perfect replacement, and that is Mr. Jack Hamlin. So he's coming up through our teacher ranks, and we're excited to be able to foster and nurture leadership within our teachers to take on administrative roles. So we congratulate Mr. Hamlin for taking on that role. At the middle school level, Mr. Ivan Ramos will be making his way back to Hoboken High School. He was a longtime staff member at Hoboken High School. He was extremely excited about the opportunity to manage the new academic support center, and that actually will work hand-in-hand with a lot of the initiatives that we have going on at the high school right now, as well as the middle school with student achievement and some support programs that we're implementing. Mr. Ramos's background in special education and INRS is a perfect fit. And so Robin Baskinger, Dr. Baskinger, who was our supervisor at the middle school, felt so strongly about staying at the middle school to help Mr. Sorafin be successful and to see the school be successful, so she's actually going to be sliding into the Vice Principal role. So we're happy about that, and that'll give Mr. Sorafin a friendly face and someone who knows the building extremely well to assist. And then finally, Mr. Bartlett will need to interview, and he's, you know, set to do so over the next couple of weeks, to interview for the Vice Principal position that Ms. Mara has vacated for early childhood. So we have a few moving chess pieces, but interestingly, all of the candidates that I talked about this evening are all within the district. They're educators and leaders that our families and our staff members know and support and respect very much. So I couldn't be happier to make these switches and changes. I think overall, it makes our administrative team and our district stronger than ever. So I appreciate it, and congratulations to all of you.
Great. Thank you. Next, we're going to move into committee reports. Ms. Good, do you have a business administrator's report tonight?
No, I'm fine. Agenda captures all my business for the month.
Okay. All right, so we'll move on to curriculum. Ms. Simons.
Good evening. The Curriculum Committee met on Wednesday, July 6, at 1:00 p.m. virtually. In attendance were Dr. Johnson, Ms. Angley, Ms. Delara, and myself. Dr. Johnson has provided us with a detailed report, and we have covered a lot of the topics, but I just want to go through what we discussed in the committee. We talked about the summer curriculum work, principals at the high school and elementary school developing personal growth periods like the middle school currently has. And the schools will host age-appropriate development topics on the five half-days in the fall, or in the next school year. We have applied for the 21st Century Community Learning Center grant, and currently, the setup in the classroom for the Academic Support Center at the high school is in progress. There are lots of new programs and events that the district will host in the next year. Some of them, we've already, we had last year, the Math ELA Science Days, but we are adding a new family barbecue, social studies event, a district scavenger hunt, a district family run, and an opportunity for parents to go into schools called Adults at Play, and it is a way for parents to meet specials teachers and do like hands-on activities, such as instruments with the music teacher. So that is it. Thank you.
Thank you. Facilities, Ms. McGurk.
Good evening, and congratulations to everyone who is moving onwards and upwards in terms of responsibilities. We're all very proud of you. The Facilities Committee met virtually on July 6, 2022. In attendance were Ms. Katamatory, Mr. Delatorre, Mr. Kirian, Mr. Callagie, and Superintendent Dr. Johnson and myself. There are six items for approval on the July agenda, and we recommend all for board approval. Five of those items, which you will see, are the leases between the District and Miles Square Early Learning Center and Hopes, the District pre-K providers. In each of these instances, the district is leasing space to the provider in order for the provider to provide pre-K services. The only other additional facilities item on the agenda for the month of July are the June 2022 Fire and Safety Drill Reports. The committee further discussed summer work that is taking place across the buildings, including the steam cleaning of the exterior of Hoboken High School. I know some people noticed that happening. I myself did not have an opportunity to be near the high school at the time, and several bathroom upgrades that are happening around the district. Finally, there was a discussion of the summer use of the pool at Hoboken High School and some of the misinformation that's been circulating in the community around this. To clarify, in the summer months, the district provides the Hoboken Recreation Department with use of the high school pool. The hours of operation are determined by the Recreation Department as they are responsible for staffing the pool with lifeguards. And this has been a topic that has come up online, in print, and also, you know, in conversations around town. The Recreation Department handles those summer recreation programs and would be a great place to direct that commentary towards. If you listen to Dr. Johnson's report this evening or Ms. Simons' curriculum report, you'll hear that there are lots of recreational opportunities that are being offered, either curricular or co-curricular, throughout the district, both during the school year and during the summer months. However, there are programs where the Recreation Department utilizes district facilities, both in the summer with the pool, sometimes the fields, and throughout the school year for the gymnasiums. So it's two separate lines. The district will continue to offer all sorts of innovative programs, as it always has done, and has been very responsive to parents and community members when requests are made. So I think some of those commentary, if it's about recreation, should probably be sent in that direction. As always, we're very committed to working with the city, with the Recreation Department, and with parents, but in the instance of the pool hours, those comments need to go back to the Recreation Committee. Thank you so much, and have a nice evening.
Thank you. Finance. Mr. Delatorre is not here tonight, but the Finance Committee met last Friday, July 8, at 2:00 p.m. In attendance were Ms. Good, Ms. Lopez, Ms. McGurk, Mr. Delatorre, and myself. The Business Office is gearing up for the new school year, so there are a number of agenda items this month, all of which the committee recommends for approval. And next, we will move to Governance. Ms. Kirian.
Hi, good evening, everyone. The Governance and Personnel Committee met on Wednesday, July 6. The attendants were Dr. Johnson, Ms. Katamatory, Mr. Cluffel, Ms. Simons, and myself. We discussed all agenda items and recommend all for approval. As is typical during the summer, the administration continues to get ready for the upcoming school year, filling new and replacement positions across the district, renewing out-ofplacement contracts, and that sort of thing. There, Dr. Johnson talked at length around a number of the important changes in administrative roles for upcoming, for this school year, that I'm just going to briefly summarize again because I think they're important enough to note again. So in no particular order, we have, are happy to welcome Mr. Sorafin to the role of Hoboken Middle School Principal, Dr. Robin Baskinger to the role of Vice Principal at the middle school, Ms. Anna Mara moves to the Director of Grants, Management, and Personnel Services for the district, Kimberly Mara moves to the position of Director and Principal of the Department of Early Childhood Education, Mr. Christopher Williams moves to the position of Vice Principal at the high school, Mr. Jack Hamlin moves to the position of Vice Principal at Connor's Elementary, and Mr. Ivan Ramos moves to the position of Director of the New Academic Support Center. So excited to see the contributions that each and every one of these professionals will make as they jump into their new roles. A number of them are here tonight, so if you have a chance, take a moment to congratulate them and wish them well in their new roles. We're excited to see what happens next. And that is my report for this evening.
Thank you. And Wellness, Ms. Delara.
All right, as per my president's report, I just want to say it's hard to believe that school's been out for a few weeks now, and we're already into mid-July, as you can see on tonight's agenda. And per Dr. Johnson's report, the district is gearing up for the opening of school in September, which will be here before we know it. Congratulations to all mentioned tonight. We are thrilled for you. I also wanted to make a few announcements with regard to the roundtable discussions that the district is hosting to discuss enrollment, current facilities, the 2022-23 budget, programs, district accomplishments, et cetera. The district has held six roundtables thus far for district parents and guardians, and is in the process of holding eight community roundtables for all Hoboken residents. The next two sessions will be held tomorrow, July 13, at 10:00 a.m., which is in person at Hoboken High School, and 6:00 p.m., which will be held virtually. The feedback we have received on the session so far has been extremely positive. We have had the opportunity to meet and speak with community members on topics relevant to the district and the community as a whole. Attendees have come in with varying levels of knowledge with regard to the district, and, you know, that has sparked some great conversation and some questions, and I think, you know, small group settings has given everybody the opportunity to participate in the discussion, which has benefited all in attendance. And that is my report. I also just wanted to mention that if anybody is interested in running for the board this November, the petition filing date is July 25, 2022. And then we will move on to public comment on agenda items.
Ms. Roseanne Versace.
Good evening. Happy summer to everybody. Roseanne Versace, Wallace School Teacher, Hoboken Education Association President. I just wanted to speak to the promotions and the changes and congratulate two of our members, Chris Williams, who will be the new Vice Principal at the high school, and Jack Hamlin, who will be the new Vice Principal at Connor's Elementary. While we are sad to see you leave our association, it is very gratifying to see our members who have worked hard to advance their careers, move up and be promoted within the district. Likewise, I'd like to congratulate Mrs. Sorafin. We've worked together while he was Vice Principal at Connor's, and I look forward to working with you at Hoboken Middle School. Ms. Kim Mara, who we worked together at Wallace as teachers, and she was an HEA rep and has advanced quite a bit these past two years, so congratulations on your new promotion, as well as Ms. Anna Mara, Ivan Ramos, and Dr. Baskinger. Apart from Dr. Baskinger, all of them were members of the HEA. So as I said, it is gratifying to see that our members have been rewarded for their hard work in the classroom and then advancing their careers through advanced degrees, et cetera. So congratulations to everybody, and enjoy the rest of the summer. Thank you.
Thank you. Kevin Davis?
No. Thank you. That's it, just a talk.
Okay, so we'll move on to consent agenda. Can I have the roll call, please?
Ms. Katamatory.
Yes.
Ms. Delira.
Yes.
Mr. Delatorre. Oh, I'm sorry. Ms. Connor.
Yes.
Mr. Cluffel.
Yes.
Ms. McGurk.
Yes.
Ms. Simon.
Yes.
Mr. Kirian.
Yes.
Ms. Angley.
Yes.
Motion passes.
Okay, so now we'll move on to public comments on both agenda and non-agenda items. Kevin Davis? Just a reminder, if you could state your name, your municipality of residence, and you get five minutes to speak, and Ms. Katamatory will notify you when you have 30 seconds left.
Oh, I'm sure she will. I'll be quick. My name's Kevin Davis. I live here in Hoboken at 1031 Clinton Street. Earlier before the meeting, the Vice President of the School Board told me that I was spreading misinformation, talking about the pool, and that it's not the school board's job to lobby other elected officials. There actually is a section on the New Jersey School Board Association website about lobbying elected officials. I'll be glad to send it along. Certainly, when you have many different government layers, it wouldn't be an extraordinary request to ask that other elected officials lobby other governmental bodies. So on the school, on the pool issue, I said "school" because it rhymes. I'm like a Dr. Seuss of sorts. On the pool issue, you go to the city representatives, you go to the Recreation Department and say, "Look, we have the space. We want to make sure that our amenities are open to the community when they're not working," because, for example, I work, as most people do, and, you know, I can't go to the pool and write articles about sporting events or do Monte Carlo simulations from the pool. But although that would be interesting if I did get a waterproof computer and I started simulating baseball games 25,000 times in the pool, but it wouldn't really be that doable. So why not have cool hours in the evening or on the weekends when people are around? I understand that it wasn't your decision, you know, but you're an effective voice. You can say, "Look, this is something that'd be really important to the community in terms of what we spend on everything else, spending more on lifeguards than other personnel. Wouldn't be that much of an expense." So that's what I would like to see from school board members is, you know, some lobbying, just as you probably do in Trenton, when I'm sure they're trying to, the lawmakers that aren't teachers are trying to pass laws that don't make any sense. You go to Trenton and say, "Look, I teach, or I represent other teachers, and this makes no sense." So that's what I would like.
Thank you. Paul?
Hi, thank you.
Dr. Johnson, just one...
Just, can I make one comment? Just kind of to answer, we don't usually do a back-and-forth, but I do think it's important to let you know that we did, when we received the hours, we did make sure we mentioned more than one occasion that night hours were, like, available and that the Recreation Department could utilize the pool facility for night hours. So we did, in fact, provide that as an option. It didn't ultimately make it to the program itself, but nighttime hours are 100% available for the rec department if they would like to expand it that way, as well as weekends, if that's something that they want to do. We were 100% open without any restrictions or anything along those lines, and when we did see the hours, we did say you could extend those hours if you wanted to. You're welcome.
In terms of exactly what Dr. Johnson said, making them aware that there were more hours, including pushing a conversation further about making sure those hours were publicized correctly, because there was a point in time where incorrect hours almost went out. So a lot of that work is happening in one-on-one conversations. It may not be the type of thing that you hear about in a committee report because it isn't necessarily committee work, nor would I go to the degree of calling it lobbying because we live in a small town. I would guarantee that most of us have had conversations with city employees or city council members during the course of walking around over, let's say, the last 96 hours where these things come up. So is it lobbying? I wouldn't call it lobbying, but is it the type of conversation that takes place in a small community? Absolutely, and I think for those of us who've gone back and forth over rec things for a number of years unrelated to school board, you know, these are the types of conversations that a lot of us find ourselves in unrelated to this quite frequently. So I think most folks who use rec services in town would welcome more voices to that chorus advocating effectively where those decisions are made, in addition to all of ours and Dr. Johnson and Mr. Callagie.
Thank you.
Paul Presanzano, 218 Hudson Street, Ward 1. We signed our son up for pre-K in March, so I'm becoming a district parent, or I am a district parent. When we signed my son up for school last year, because we couldn't get in because he was too young because of his birthday cutoff, when we signed up at that school, they welcomed us with open arms. They invited us immediately in. We became part of the family, and that happened. Well, even though my son is not going to school until September, when I sign up and he says he's accepted, I'm a part of the district family now. So I thought the welcome wagon would roll out. That wasn't the case. And the reason why, I had a letter passed on to me, and it was a letter sent, I believe, by Dr. Johnson to the parents and the guardians. And this isn't the first time this has happened. In the referendum, we did our... In the referendum, we did our research, and we realized there was meetings that were for parents and guardians only. But what got me was the content of the letter. And let me read this for you. "As you know, the Hoboken Public School District engaged in a demographic study and the long-range facility process over the past two years. This led the district to hold a referendum for a new high school to be built on the existing stadium." Let me move forward, not to bore you. "At this time, we continue to focus on enrollment growth, facility needs, budget, and our course, and our academic and co-curricular activities." So this is the roundtable discussion that some of this was going to be discussed at. So I figured this would be a perfect time to kind of get myself involved, get my feet wet, push some of the negativity in the back from the referendum, and move forward with a fresh foot. The reason why is that when I sign up, it says Hoboken Public Schools Open Registration. So I'm guessing when I sign him up, he's part of the school, he's part of the district. So let me rehash what happened. I signed up on Friday, got nothing back for the Monday morning meeting on July 10th, or June 10th. As you know, I do have, I think, a positive relationship with Superintendent Johnson, Dr. Johnson. I reached out to her. Her and I went back and forth in two emails. She got her point across, but basically what I read back from it, she followed Hoboken Board of Ed guidelines. After all, you're her boss. So of not attending. So the problem I had there was, it was a perfect opportunity to kind of fix things that had happened in the past where perception, whether you disagree or not agree here, that the community, at least from where I sit, there's a pecking order. District parents first, and then everybody else in the community. Whether you agree with that or not, perception is reality. Sometimes we know that's not true, but the problem is perception is reality. In the finance world, if one group gets information before another, it's called inside information. If they act on that, there's massive consequences. Now, for a little history lesson. We came in here, made a pledge allegiance to the flag. When I was in school, my teachers always brought out props to make me remember things. So July 4th, we just celebrated our birthday, the United States of America. For 246 years ago, we fought a war with this country. The flag was a little different, but you see what I'm saying here. England. And one of the main reasons that we had a war with them was taxation without representation. We all know that because our teachers pounded that into our head. So if I think about this, I pay taxes, so why am I not allowed into meetings where they're discussing things that are very pertinent to everybody up here and to me and the community because my taxes go towards that? Now, Dr. Johnson, I apologize. You told me there was some sensitive information that was going to be shared in there in light of some of the events that had happened around that time. I found that difficult to believe because when you have an open forum like that, you have as many number of schools that we have in here, different attributes or different characteristics of each school, and different grade levels. So there's absolutely no way you could have a one-size-fit-all conversation, especially if you're talking about security of buildings, because it's different for everybody. So the problem there is, I can't dispute that because I wasn't allowed in the meeting. And there's no record of the meeting that I can watch on a video or anything of that sort. Now, again, I'm going to repeat, at any meetings where the LRFP, demographic studies, enrollment growth, facility needs, and four board members and a superintendent are at a meeting, I think the community should be the first to be involved, not just a district parent. Yes, you did offer more meetings for the public, but if I look, they were there first. Well, I guess I must be in limbo or purgatory. If you're Catholic, you would understand that that's the time when you die, you're not really in heaven, but you're in the middle, and you're waiting for St. Peter to let you in. So I must be in purgatory right now because I'm not fully a district parent, but technically on paper, I am. My son's going to Rouge School. So it seems that there's special treatment for district parents. And you've had a problem with transparency in the referendum, and we still haven't had anything changed from that. So I think there extra attention needs to be paid to this. We don't plead allegiance to this flag.
Time is up. Sorry, sir.
Well, this is a simple fix. Any meetings that are concerned with students? Sorry, sir, if you can make your point. Any meetings that concern students?
Time is up. Thank you.
We should actually have parents involved. When it involves the community, you should have everybody.
Thank you.
Sir, thank you very much.
No, no more, no more names on the public comment list.
Okay. Well, that concludes our meeting. Do I have a motion to adjourn?
Motion second.
All in favor, say aye.
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 Meeting adjourned. Thank you.